Good evening and welcome to night school bar meeting. This is Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Six o'clock, we're in the Susan Tollie Lodge, the boardroom of the eighteen eighty-seven building. I have the call meeting in order to order and ask Mr. Todd like to follow up.
Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gayheart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll. She's unable to be with us this evening. Mr. Martel.
Here.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Ms. Degner.
Here.
And Ms. Gotcha.
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will continue. I will note that this meeting has been noticed per state statutes. Do we have any community participation other than stuff that's on? We have a good crowd here, but other than what's on the agenda? Not seeing any, we'll dispense with reading that and go to the Tibbetts Elementary Student Presentation. It's Frost.
So my name is Brian Frost, I am principal at Tibbetts Elementary and it is my distinct honor to introduce several of my staff members and their students who are coming to share some information about their reading and their writing, specifically that reading notebooks. So I have Ms. Schott, she's our instructional coach at Tibbetts, and Ms. Marsall, and Ms. Claypool, first grade teachers, and then I have Ava, Autumn, Bella, and Cameron, who will then be sharing their reports with us. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Schott, who will kind of give you the why behind the readers notebook. Will you?
Hello, everybody, it's my job and my joy to work with our first grade teachers and some of our levelist readers and thinkers and writers at Tibbetts School, and we are happy to be here tonight. At the beginning of the year, Mrs. Marsall and Mrs. Claypool and I were looking for a project that we could do together that would show some deepening of our students' thinking, and so we decided to do some readers notebooks along with our reading curriculum this year. Implementing the use of the readers notebooks has helped us address the districts for our goals. So with relationships, we work with these children in small groups, which gives us time to really check in with them and their thinking, their reading, and their general day-to-day being. Responsivity, when we're able to see the written evidence of their thinking, we're able to take the next step in being prescriptive in what our readers need. Relevance, the writing that the children do is specific to their guided reading books and aligned with our common core skills, and rigor. When the children do the thinking and the writing, we are putting the onus on them to do the heavy lifting, which leads to growth and independence for our littles.
A great aspect of the readers notebook that we have is a goal-setting piece, and this goal-setting piece really helps students learn how to have that growth mindset that we're all striving for. So just as students have their individual reading levels that we determine at the beginning and multiple times throughout the year, they also have individual reading goals that are set in their reading notebooks. So in the inside cover of all of our readers notebooks, we have ICAN statements that we go over with the kids every time that we meet with them, highlighting what goal we're working on. And just as levels A through C readers have certain goals that are specific for them, level HIJ and so on, also have goals that are specific to them. So two ICAN statements I'd like to share, just to put those ICAN statements into perspective. One is I can identify text features like titles, pictures, labels, and captions, and another one can be I can talk about the message or theme of a text, and you'll notice how some are highlighted and some are not. Students are able to highlight them with us in our small group after they've shown proficiency in that goal in some way, shape, or form that can be done verbally or written, and there's a lot of power when we take out those highlighters and when students get to uncap those highlighters and highlight that sentence, it's quite a sense of accomplishment. So another great aspect of the readers notebook is that it promotes small group work and group discussion, but yet it also allows for individuals to grow at their own pace. So the group aspect, when we get together on those every other days, kids are sharing their ideas and their opinions with each other, and they're listening to others' interpretations of maybe the beginning, or middle, or end of a text. But also, students are learning to agree or disagree with their fellow classmates, which is an important part of being a citizen. Another thing, the individual piece that is key, it allows students to have differentiated learning. As far as writing goes in the readers notebooks, some students, say in ten minutes, can write one sentence about, say, the beginning of a text, where other students might be able to write four or five sentences about the beginning of a text. So that differentiation piece is really brought out within the readers notebooks. And Ava and Autumn, will you turn to your Venn diagrams for me for a minute? So a couple weeks ago, with our interactive read alouds that we had purchased for us, we did an author study on the author Vera Williams, where we dove into four of her books, and then we compared and contrasted two of them. And so we did this whole group, and a couple weeks later, we were done with that one, and then about a week or so after, Ava right here said to me, "Mrs. Claypool, I thought of something else that I can add to my Venn diagram." And that moment, my eyes got big and my heart got full, and I just said, "Wow." I went to my colleagues and said, "This is a big deal," because she's thinking about it above and beyond, she's reflecting, and she's recalling information, and I was very proud of that moment, so.
The main reason for using the readers notebooks, in my opinion, is to deepen their thinking, talking about the books, and writing about the reading. The notebooks are proving to be a very good tool for us. They're interactive, they're structured, but yet they're also personal, and a place where we can catch their new learning and their new thinking. They also cut down on lots of loose papers, because they're all kept in the notebook, I like that. I think they'll be good for conferences, we can share them with the parents and show their learning, keep a record of the kids' reading, and keep all their reading responses together in one place. So glad that we took the leap on trying this new challenging endeavor. Hasn't proved to be as challenging as I thought. They're doing a great job. It's especially successful because of the teamwork we have. We have the backing and support from Mr. Frost and Mrs. Schott, and I think we're doing really well. The kids are loving it. I happened to ask the rest of my class, because I couldn't bring them all today, some of their favorite things, and they said, "I like reading nonfiction books and then writing about it." "I like the tabs." Do you see the tabs? "I like the tabs," because you can go back to the books and then remember them. Another one said, another one I wanted to share, "You can learn, I like fossils and it's real," so this one was remembering a specific book. And one of my really reluctant readers and reluctant writers said, "I can write, I can draw, and I can learn about books." So it just, again, makes you feel like, wow, they're really worth it, the hard work, the extra time, it's worth it, and they really like it. So I would like to introduce the kids and let them share their favorite thing about the notebooks. Bella, what would you say is your favorite thing? You can just tell us, you don't have to find your spot.
I like writing in these notebooks, because I like the books, and sometimes they're my favorite books, and I like writing about them.
Great. Ava, would you share your favorite thing about the books, the notebooks?
It's the Venn diagram, because you can compare and contrast things with the books and see if they're, you can have something like the same or things are different.
Right. Autumn, what do you like about notebooks?
I like that we can hear about books and compare them.
Great. Cam, what's your favorite thing about notebooks?
I like when we get to read the books and then write about them.
We'd like to let them walk around and share. That's okay.
Please, please. Fisher, pardon? I have a question. Unfavorable part. I can read. Would his dad help him? Did he help him home too? Your parents should. Which is what they do sometimes. No, we're good. Yeah. Yeah, that's okay.
So where do they find these books? Was it a specific book?
I guess it is. I was saying, I like, I was like, this must not be my experience. I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I was gonna say. I figured out a new way to do this. I didn't know what was required. I used the stuff later. Now I gotta be careful. If you come a little faster. If you come a little faster. If you come a little faster. I figured out a new way to do this. I figured out a new way to do this. I figured out a new way to do this. I figured out a new way to do this. I figured out a new way to do this. I figured out a new way to do this. I figured out a new way to do this. I figured out a new way to do this. Now I gotta be careful. If you come a little faster. If you come a little faster. Three questions for the school board for the teacher of the district.
No, we were asking them while they were here. It was pretty interesting.
Thank you very much, Tibbetts, we appreciate your time. Welcome, our James Lira. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Lira, our director of our international exchange program.
Very cool, very cool.
So as Sister Todd on Saturday, Sister Lira is the International Exchange Coordinator for the district, and this is our fifth year of our exchange program with AIA and Wayfeng China, and we're really happy to have a group of eight visitors, seven of them from Wayfeng and one is from Beijing. And great to have some of our host families with us tonight, too. We have the Holder family in the back, it's their first time, and then the Shapers kind in the middle, they hosted twice now, and the Bruce's have lost track by five, six.
Five or six, I'm not sure.
Yeah, because they're coming twice a year, so this is their third time in winter, and then all the other times they've come in summer. So we start with the visitors, introducing, I'll introduce the teacher over here, Helen. She is a geography and math middle school teacher. Helen, and then the students can just say your name, and you want to say what grade you're in, or how old you are. Your name is?
My name is Katie, and I'm in, I'm in seventh grade, and I'm eleven years old.
My name is Tina, I'm in seventh grade. And?
Oh, I'm twelve years old.
I'm Angie, I'm forty years old.
I'm Susan, I'm in grade six.
I'm Annie, I'm in grade seven, I'm twelve years old.
Hi, I'm James, I'm fifteen years old. Pretty good.
So as you can hear, they all pick English names, American names for their English class, or sometimes the teacher selects their name for them. And they're here now because they have Ah for Chinese New Year, that's their biggest holiday, Ah for a month, so that's why they come in the winter as well. So we've got the six kids at middle school, one at the high school, and then Ms. Helen is floating around between the two schools, and we have a bunch of events planned for them as always. We wanted to do the Ice Castles, but those haven't happened yet, so we're gonna try Hot Chocolate Fest in Burlington, we're gonna visit a dairy farm, Milwaukee, Chicago, you guys did?
We did Jelly Belly on Sunday, and the outlet moments.
Yeah, we were gonna do that Saturday, but then the storm came, so we postponed that, but they got to anyway. Trampoline Park in Berlin, those are the main things. And then we'll celebrate the New Year with them by making dumplings and having traditional meal in Milwaukee. We have a hot pot, authentic place, so we'll do that.
Katie's excited.
How did the first two days of school go?
Oh, great.
Is that good? We have a gift for all of you for New Year. Elkhorn is known as the Christmas card town, so I know whenever we go to China, you're always so generous and give us some gifts, so we wanted to share with you a gift that is kind of reflective of that tradition in the town. So I know, would like to give those to you. Your students, you wanna go up?
Sure, you want?
And we'd like you to, oh, we have one for you, too.
I'll get up there.
Picture, picture. I don't know, the school board, if you wanna stand up? I'm good. What do you say in China to smile?
茄子.
Thank you very much. Welcome to. Cam, thank your parents for hosting, you guys make awesome.
Can she tell you all why she likes hosting?
She's been dying to say.
Why do you like it, Grace?
What's your favorite part? About how many of you are students?
I like the view of that high house.
What do you like about it?
I mean, it's cute.
I think she's cute. Thank you.
All right, so Susan, Helen, Jane, Jenny, Katie, I'll take you.
Have a good trip, everyone.
Have fun.
Who else away?
Bye.
Hey, how's overnight travel requests? Stay outside of the home?
One of them's here.
Oh.
I'm just gonna embrace the fact that we follow little kids again that are cute. Here we are, I will let Rachel start us off.
Okay, hi, everybody, I'm Rachel. Last year I competed in public health, and my group actually went to internationals, and we made it to the second round. This year I'm competing in medical photography, and also, I just wanted to say, even though I'm not going into the medical field, HOSA has really allowed me to grow my leadership and public speaking skills.
My name is Devon Davy. Last year I was, I competed in physical therapy and qualified for internationals. This year I'm doing physical therapy again, and it's an event that has a knowledge test, and then at state regionals, you perform different skills to help patients. And in order to do this, Mercy has, like, given me opportunities at hospitals, and they're going to work on my different skills.
Hi, my name's Molly Prindergast, and I compete in forensic science, which is solving a crime scene with a partner. So I qualified for internationals my sophomore and junior year, so I will compete again this year, and in January I have this upcoming test, so if I pass, I will go to HOSA states.
My name's Hannah.
And I'm Sydney.
I'm a part of one of the hostable teams that made it to internationals, as well as the second round of internationals, which is the top thirty-two teams.
And we have been studying really hard, two, three days a week during our lunch and study hall for the upcoming test on Tuesday.
I'm Sean, and I'm a member of the other hostable team, along with Catherine and Karina, and we also made it to internationals last year, and we also made it to the second round, which is extremely difficult.
I'm Karina, as Sean said, I'm part of the hostable team. I also took the Healthcare Issues Exam at international and was recognized there, and I'm a hospitality volunteer and team ambassador at the Rome Down House.
I'm Kate Passler, I was also a part of HOSA this year, and I am an officer for Elkhorn HOSA, I'm the reporter this year. Also, for HOSA altogether as our group, we've accumulated seven hundred and sixty-two and a half hours. This goes with Out of the Darkness Walk, Santa Cruz, Benefiting Open Arms Free Clinic, Open Arms Free Clinic Birthday Gala, Community Halloween Night, The Baskets for Twin Oaks Homeless Shelter, and the National Pediatric Cancer Foundation Service Project.
Hi, I'm Anastasia Gahowski. This past summer at internationals, I competed in medical reading and I placed first. I currently serve as the Elkhorn HOSA president and the vice president of Wisconsin HOSA, so as the vice president of Wisconsin HOSA, I'm involved at the state level with the conference planning and also the facilitation of the state project of work, and this year I'm rerunning for state office, so I hopefully get back in. And then, this past summer, I worked at Open Arms Free Clinic for over a hundred hours. I worked as a scribe and also doing some clerical work at the front desk, and this allowed me to earn the Barbara James Service Award this year. And we would also like to give a little shout-out to our advisor, who amazingly won the Wisconsin HOSA Oxtanding Advisor Award. So that's, and she learned so much from everything that she does, she puts in so much time, and she deserves it more than anyone else.
That was not what you were supposed to talk about next.
She deserves to be recognized for that. So with that, I would like to humbly ask that you approve our trip to SLC in Chulavista, which is State Leadership Conference, I'm so used to saying the acronym for it, sorry, the State Leadership Conference, and then the International Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas. Houston, sorry, 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 Dallas, Houston, my bad.
So typically, we come around this time of year and ask for approval to go to state. This year I would like to seek approval for internationals, and this is why, we have no idea of our numbers, I don't even know the hotel at this point, but when we get done with our state conference, it's mid to late April, and the hotel selection that's left for us is not always the best. When we went to Dallas, transportation was not very good. We had to take public transportation, and when we take twenty-six kids, it's hard to get twenty-six kids on and off a train and make sure that we're safe doing that. And so if we get approval for Houston tonight, they have not released the hotel information, and so my hope is, I can, once that gets released, I can guess how many kids, how many rooms we might need, and I can reserve those, and then if we don't use them, we can cancel them. And so that will put us in a better situation, I think, for transport when we're in Houston and just being in the midst of everything a little bit.
It's a good idea.
Always very professional, and always such a good job representing our district, so I see no problem with that.
Devon, what made you think about physical therapy? I am just teasing.
So we had two teams advance to the final thirty-two in the hostable, right? How many total teams at internationals started in that hostable competition?
I'd guess like a hundred fifty.
Yeah, so it's three for every state, so.
Okay.
And then there's a couple other for international teams.
Yeah, so pretty phenomenal to have two in the final thirty-two in the international competition.
I don't think people understand how phenomenal that is. Maybe a Texas school might get two in, Texas really sort of dominates hostable, and for Elkhorn to get two teams in is an amazing statement about their dedication and their preparation for that event.
Basically, when you're doing all this, are you doing all the studying on your own, are you, I mean, what do you use for resources? I know everyone is probably a little bit different, but let's say for HOSA Bowl, because there's so many of you.
So as Sydney said, or Hannah, we study a lot during our homeroom and lunches, so it's our own time, and the resources we get from our wonderful advisor, Mr. Sankey, fantastic books, and we use a lot of online resources as well.
Okay, all right. And once in a while, we get some of our kids from the past, we'll come in and quiz them and work with them as well, like, that's all our HOSA mentors, will come back and help.
Other questions?
Do you have any fundraisers coming up?
We do. Frank's was super nice to us last year, and I think they actually have been doing the same thing with the band students this year, where they let the kids come in and demo products for them, and so Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and that's been amazing, and I think we're gonna start that again, they'd like to see us start in February, which will be wonderful. That has helped us a lot.
Other questions? Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve.
So?
Is there a second? I don't have a second. So I moved in second to approve the overnight travel request to the HOSA State Leadership Conference and National Leadership Conference as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next we have approval of our board minutes, regular meeting minutes are attached to the agenda, otherwise closed session, I passed out at the beginning. Any questions on that? Hearing any, looking for a motion to approve our minutes?
Okay, I will move to approve the minutes of December ninth, two thousand nineteen, regular and closed session school board meetings as presented.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of December ninth, two thousand nineteen, regular and closed session school board meetings as presented. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll is gone, sorry. Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
abstain.
Ms. Degner.
abstain.
And Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills, Mr. Trump.
The general and other fund bills this evening covers checks number one-three-eight-three-six-one through one-three-eight-six-nine-two, wire transfers four-fifty-one through four-fifty-seven, wire transfers four-seventy-one through four-seventy-nine, ACH checks one-fifty-three through one-eighty-six, and then three voited checks one-three-eight, one-three-one, one-three-eight, four-oh-five, one-three-eight, four-eight-nine, combined amount of one million, one-hundred-eighteen-thousand, four-hundred-fifty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. And then there's a memo of some information on several of the bills in your packet, and then that's followed by the treasures report for the month of November. In the very last page, I was just gonna highlight for you, I just added a comparison on both revenues and expense in terms of percentage that we either received or expended this year compared to last year through the same time period, just to give you a kind of a sense of how we're operating relative to the prior year, so.
Questions for Mr. Trump? Not hearing any, looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty, check numbers of one-three-eight-three-six-one to one-three-eight-six-nine-two, wire transfers four-fifty-one to four-fifty-seven, and four-seven-one to four-seventy-nine. ACH check numbers one-fifty-three to one-eight-six, and voited check numbers one-three-eight, one-three-one, one-three-eight-four-oh-five, and one-three-eight-four-eight-nine.
Mrs. Ingersoll is gone, sorry. Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Abstain.
Ms. Degner.
Abstain.
And Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills, Mr. Trump.
The general and other fund bills this evening covers checks number one-three-eight-three-six-one through one-three-eight-six-nine-two, wire transfers four-fifty-one through four-fifty-seven, wire transfers four-seventy-one through four-seventy-nine, ACH checks one-fifty-three through one-eighty-six, and then three voided checks, one-three-eight, one-three-one, one-three-eight, four-zero-five, one-three-eight, four-eight-nine, the combined amount of one million, one hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. And then there's a memo of some information on several of the bills in your packet, and then that's followed by the treasures report for the month of November. In the very last page, I was just going to highlight for you, I just added a comparison on both revenues and expense in terms of percentage that we either received or expended this year compared to last year through the same time period, just to give you a kind of a sense of how we're operating relative to the prior year.
Questions for Mr. Trump? Not hearing any? Looking for a motion to approve?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, check numbers of one-three-eight-three-six-one to one-three-eight-six-nine-two, wire transfers four-fifty-one to four-fifty-seven, and four-seventy-one to four-seventy-nine. ACH check numbers one-fifty-three to one-eight-six, and voided check numbers one-three-eight, one-three-one, one-three-eight-four-zero-five, and one-three-eight-four-eight-nine, in the combined amount of one million, one hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents as presented.
Is there a second? All second. So moved in second to approve the general and other fund bills of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, checks numbered one-three-eight-three-six-one to one-three-eight-six-nine-two, wire transfers four-fifty-one to four-fifty-seven, and four-seventy-one to four-seventy-nine. ACH check numbers one-fifty-three to one-eight-six, and voided check numbers one-three-eight, one-three-one, and one-three-eight-four-zero-five, and one-three-eight-four-eight-nine, in the combined amount of one million, one hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents as presented. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Degner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. Establishment of open enrollment spaces for the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year.
Okay, we sat down and looked at our average students per class, kindergarten through twelfth grade, and we also looked at the, you know, with the current law and the way the program or the financing in relation to special education. And with that in mind, and looking at the average number of seats at each grade level, they fall well below the established criteria by the school board. I thought this was a good chart for you as well, as you may have questions from time to time. Does that mean that every single class at that grade level is at that number? No, it doesn't. That's our entire, taking all of our kindergarten sections, we have eleven of them divided by the two fifteen. So that's what that overall average would be. In some schools, we may have a grade level that has a higher number of students, where they are either close to that cap or at that cap. And in those cases, in open enrollment, a family indicates which school they would like to attend, but it doesn't guarantee that they get to go to that school. So after that initial open enrollment period, we all sit down with the principals, we look at our projected class numbers. And again, it's, you know, it's the best guess we can possibly make based off of the students that we have. We know that we're going to have some move in and some move out. And we place students into these schools based off of those numbers, accommodating parent requests when we can, but we also, for example, if Westside is sitting at a second grade class that has three sections of twenty-four, but Jackson has three sections of nineteen, we're going to encourage or talk to the parents about going to Jackson instead of Westside, even if they're below that cap. And more often than not, once the parents come in, they go on a tour, they meet the principal, they're happy with that, and end up going to the placement that we recommend for them. And, yes, are there any questions on that? It's fairly simple and straightforward, but it's something that we statistically need to establish once a year.
Well, I glanced at it at first, and it's a lighter type print, and I didn't see the point five. And I glanced at one ten thousand? How did we get ten thousand?
Oh, yeah, I see it's a little...
Well, the font, and that's fine, because it made me do a double take and really look at it further.
Yeah, and that number is based off of that established criteria.
So how do we get, like, a seat available, forty point five students?
We must have a part-time student at that. Or it's averaging.
Oh, it's just average, okay. I want to see what that...
It's not really a house.
We have a faculty office running around down in Jackson.
We do have part-time enrollment, but that's probably just the average.
Okay.
Right down the middle.
Do we have a class size for middle school?
We do.
We just don't have it listed, because it has one, three, four, five, and secondary. I would imagine we're probably at thirty.
Secondary is thirty. I believe off the top of my head.
Middle school would be thirty?
Sixth through twelfth grade.
Okay. It's just not listed, that's all.
It's the same as I've read. I'll have to double check at Paul's side of my head. I know it's at least thirty. I don't think it's thirty-two, I think it's thirty.
Special and the different.
What we find, and we went through this with the administrative team today, with the exception of this year's current senior class, this group coming in in kindergarten is actually our largest four K, it's our largest four-year-old kindergarten group that we've had since four-year-old kindergarten started. And so most of our grade levels, they start around that level at those earlier years, and then they slowly grow each of the years as they move forward. Like, our class that has, you know, that two-sixty, some of those larger classes, they were thirty to forty students smaller back in kindergarten, which is kind of critical for us for future planning, because if that wasn't the case, we'd have a significant declining enrollment problem down the road. So the open enrollment has really helped keep those numbers there and keep us in a position where we can operate and not be in where we're having to lay off substantial staff, like, you know, Lake Geneva had to go through that with that declining enrollment, where they laid off twenty-four staff members last year. That was just in the high school district, I believe.
Wow.
So.
Otherwise, looking for a motion.
I move to place no caps on open enrollment spaces for regular education students at all grade levels and for special education students who qualify for programs already established within the district for the two thousand and twenty-one school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to place no caps on open enrollment spaces for regular education students in all grade levels and for special education students who qualify for programs already established within the district for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
It's like, ah, my order, sorry. Mr. Gayheart. Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Degner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. Report discussion items, report.
Okay. So some of this goes back to before winter break, yeah. So at the elementary schools, all the elementary schools had their holiday concerts. Tibbetts had a PTA Family Fun Night, that was with Santa, and they had hot cocoa-making stations and just a lot of activities for the kids. Last Friday, Tibbetts wore orange for their bullying prevention. Classes are also starting to receive rewards for their paws, which is their behavior incentive program. So the classes, the more paws they get, they get little parties. At Jackson, the varsity girls' basketball team stopped by to read to the kindergarteners, and they gave them a free ticket to their game last December twelfth. And then the first graders at Jackson wrote letters to soldiers in the hospital. The staff there had a door decorating contest to spread holiday cheer. Third grade had a career speaker on December seventeenth. Fifth graders welcomed the new year by writing resolutions. At Westside, before the break, the Polar Express came to visit the kids. It was a Zamboni push thing, and they decorated it like a train. Mr. Kitzler also stopped by to read to the kindergarteners. They kicked off their Kids Heart Challenge on Friday, which is their fundraiser for the American Heart Association. And signups started for their fourth annual lip sync battle. At the middle school, seven eighth graders were honored as Peace members, and two of them will be going to Gateway to go to a luncheon. The Geography Bee took place. Students from Avid at the high school went to talk to incoming eighth graders about how Avid can benefit them as they're transitioning to the high school. Band and choir had their holiday concert. Our DECA program at the high school continues to reach out to middle schoolers by having middle school DECA meetings. And EAMS Student Council also created dress-up days before the holidays. At the high school, on December eleventh, there was a three-two-one academic competition. The Holiday Band Concert was on the sixteenth. The High School Choir Concert was on the eighteenth. Our esports team became the two thousand and nineteen Overwatch state champions. Both Hosa and the cheer team made reverse advent calendar baskets with food and various necessities for the Twin Oaks Homeless Shelter. Student Council also had their holiday dress-up days. Spanish classes took a day to go caroling throughout the school. Over break, Hosa volunteered for the Santa Cruz to support Open Arms Free Clinic. Our winter sports continued to be victorious. Gymnastics had a season high last Tuesday at their triangular. Boys swim continues to win both meets and individual events. Basketball is having a winning season. Girls are currently seven and four, and boys are seven and two. This week is course registration. The school has held parent informational meetings, and freshmen through junior students will have class meetings to finalize their plan for the upcoming school year. At Options, they celebrated the holiday season with their concert in open house. It was well-attended. Mrs. Stone and Ms. Spandy hosted coffee with the principals for families. It was well-attended, and their discussion included the upcoming referendum. Trimester exams went well at Options. The support teachers continue to provide tutoring for high school students, and these are well-attended study sessions over at Options. And that's it.
That's a lot of stuff.
That's a month on month of making.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, and including me in the deck director's report rotation, it's been a while since we've done an update regarding the school performance, and we do have some updated numbers that are really reflective of last year's performance, but they don't come out until the fall of, you know, the subsequent year. So I wanted to take an opportunity to go through the, some of those performance updates, but also share with you so that as board members, I know you get approached, or you have people who ask questions, I want you to also be knowledgeable. So if you have questions anytime, stop me and ask me as we go through this. But there's a number of different measures that schools are measured by, and I know you've, you know, seen them. We have the state report card, there's the U.S. News and World Report, which we'll talk a little bit about. There's redefining ready metrics, which we've adopted. There's a consortium working on getting the state to adopt that more statewide as well, so we're kind of in the forefront on that. And our report card has been shared at the state level and national level as well. And then also, I want to touch base on benchmark testing, what that is, because I know that's a topic that you get asked about. So first up, I, one that is very common is that state report card. I know that for better or for worse, you may have people approach, or they look at, what's that district report card? How does, you know, they don't really ask, how does it work? They just look at that score up in the top, and how does that compare to, you know, other districts? One of the things that is really not talked about, and I wanted to make sure that you as board members are aware, and we've mentioned this before, but down here at the very bottom of the report card, nobody seems to ever pay attention to this little statement right here. Report cards for different types of schools or districts should not be directly compared. Basically, this is the whole big gamut, so to speak, with score reports. They're not comparable one to another. Unless you have the exact same demographics as another district, the report cards score differently. So, and it's weighted differently. And if you go to the online, the school's report card, you can click right here on this link, and it will take you right to the little scoring scale. What happened several years ago, this was passed by state legislature, wasn't something that DPI wanted to do. It was, I'm sure there were the lobbyists or groups that wanted to push for this, but they found that there's a certain demographic that has the most significant impact on what student achievement is. Do you guys know what that demographic or that trait is? It's over and over in research, it's socioeconomics. And so understandably so, when they looked at the state report card and the scores prior to the sliding scale, there is a direct correlation between the level of poverty a district had and how high they, how well they did on the state report card. Now, you had outliers. There were districts of high poverty who also had high achievement, and they did very well on that old-school report card. But the law of averages took care of itself, and there was that trend. And so there was a push that, well, hey, we need to shift how the report cards are weighted and account for, and shift the grading based on what that free and reduced lunch percentage is. So when they say economically disadvantaged, that's just strictly based on free and reduced lunch. So you can slide the scale over to whatever the school's percentage of free and reduced lunch is, and it will change these weights right here. And so the report cards are based on student achievement, student growth, and they measure growth in a little funky way, too. It's really measured on if they move from a minimal to basic to proficient to advanced. It's, you know, did they move into a category, or they're projected to move into that category, then you get credit for the growth. So student achievement growth, closing gaps, that's looking at minority students, students with disabilities, English language learners, economically disadvantaged, and it's comparing those subgroups to the state average. So if you're at that state average or better, then you're going to have a good closing gap score. If you're behind the state average, you're not going to have a great closing gap score. And then the last one is on-track and post-secondary readiness, and those are the metrics. Are you on track to graduate? Are you, you know, what's your attendance rate? And that's what, that's really looking at. You'll notice, in this case, a school that has a seventy percent free and reduced lunch, student achievement's only weighted at five point three percent. So then their, their report card focuses heavy on growth. And so when the state did this, a third of the schools went up, a third of the schools went down, and a third of the schools stayed about the same. So for our school district, we stayed about the same. However, we had schools within our school district who went down and some that went up. In particular, Jackson School, which is a high poverty school, over fifty percent of their students are free and reduced lunch, the scale shifted from achievement, which they were one of those poor schools that had high achievement. But because of the formula, it discredited their high achievement because it made an assumption, well, you have a high percentage of poor students, so they're not going to achieve very well, so we're going to focus on the growth. The problem is, growth is scored by moving kids from one category to the next. Well, if you already have a large chunk at proficient, moving from proficient to advanced is extremely difficult, because the advanced cut scores are around the ninety-third, ninety-fourth percentile. So there's not, statistically, there's very few kids that get to advanced. So if you're already up there, you didn't get a lot of credit for the growth. Jackson went down, despite being one of those outliers that you should look to emulate. Tibbetts, who had high achievement, but because they already had a lot of kids up in those areas, they may not have had as high a growth, they benefited, because if you have lower poverty, they weight more on achievement and less on, on growth. So they had that inverse effect, where they kind of shot up. And Westside stayed relatively, they're closer to the state average, they stayed relatively close to where they were. So how they work, I wanted to share, and I shared this scenario with the teachers to help them wrap their heads around it. Roger Bannister, he was, he was the first man to break the four-minute mile. So prior to that, he was at four oh three point six, and he was about ready to retire from running, but he said he wanted to give it one more chance, one more shot. And what's pretty phenomenal, that was all on the old cinder tracks with, you know, pre-Nike shoes. And so he, he worked really hard, but he had very little to gain, but ultimately in nineteen fifty-four, he dropped four point two seconds and broke that barrier. So he had very little growth by reducing the time, but he was already at a very high achieving level. So we'll consider that's more like that affluent school that has high achievement. Then we have three fellows who their weight is really big, but they're, you know, working hard, it's because they're pumped up on, we'll say, multi-levels of support, RTI, they're, you know, putting in that extra time. And they have a pretty good minute mile. I mean, for someone who weighs, you know, they're probably... And they have a pretty good minute mile. I mean, for someone who weighs, you know, they're probably two seventy, two eighty. They're running a seven and a half minute mile, so just that, that's pretty good. So they train really hard and they drop a minute and they get down to six point five. That's really booking when you're that size, I would imagine. Um, and then you've got the Couch Potato, um, who is running a twelve minute mile, but decides to get off the couch, New Year's resolution time and, and drops some weight, starts working and, and drops two minutes on the time. So in this scenario, if you got to pick who performed the best of those three scenarios or those three type schools in this analogy. They, they all.
Not comparable, yes. It's really not comparable. That's very good analogy.
So the way the report card works, Bannister and the Couch Potato would likely have a similarly high school report card. And they would do well because Bannister, he's already got that high achievement and they recognize growth doesn't matter that much. Um, you're there. The Couch Potato, we don't care that you run a twelve minute mile, you dropped two minutes, you had good growth. That's great. Um, and what really matters is, well, how much growth did the three fellows have the prior year? They had some growth and their achievement's good, but they don't care as much about the achievement. So they're kind of lost in that middle and that's why they're in that middle group. Um, Roger Bannister, as I said, his was a high achieving and when this legislation was passed, um, it was purposely done to protect those, you know, not, not in a malicious way, but they recognized, well, there are those uh, high income districts aren't going to grow as much. I, I disagree with that misnomer. I think everyone has room for growth. It just depends on how do you measure that growth? Um, so that gets to our school report card. First and foremost, it's not comparable to any of the other school district report cards in our area because our demographics are different than the rest of them. That being said, we have an exceptionally high school report card and, uh, it's the um, second highest, let's see, oh, let me go back. The district overall report card is the second highest report card in the area. Now, when we look at these district uh, report cards, and this gives you the breakdown of each of the schools there, there is one, the, the report cards are made of different measures. Achievement is measured the same way on each and every school. So you could look, and this is what I, I had someone from the county attorney call who had to determine where to place the student, in Lake Geneva School or at Jackson School. And her initial reaction is, oh, it looks like these two Lake Geneva schools have a higher school report card score. It was about like a point and a half. So they must be better schools. I probably need to recommend. So I, I went through the whole, you know, my little soapbox on what school report cards are, and I told her, you need to look at student achievement. And they were all very similar on the student achievement too. And I mean, really, you need to get out, go and visit, look in the, the schools. But uh, student achievement is a comparable measure because it's measured the same and it's the only one that's measured exactly the same between all those school districts. So if you want to look at the school district report cards, if people ask you, even though we have a very high school report card, I would tell them, the report cards aren't comparable, but you can look at the achievement scores. Those are comparable. Um, now for ours, our achievement, because we're a large sample size, they don't fluctuate as much as like Williams Bay who has a small sample size and they fluctuate quite a bit. But consistently, we're up in that top one or two on that achievement. Ironically, when you look at the district report cards, and I, I pulled out the high school one because we have unified um, high school districts, so you can't compare our district achievement level to like Lake Geneva Union High Schools district. It's hard to compare those. So, but you can't compare the high schools. So of this list right here, any guesses which district had the highest district report card last? Not this year, but the year before?
I know.
Rita?
Devon.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. Remember talking about that because of that scale.
Yeah. And so, I mean, this is keep in mind, and, and this is a, a great example of it. It's not to, they're just, it's weighted differently. Where this number of that achievement score only factored into five percent of their overall report card score. So, um, they did have the highest report card last year. Um, all of our schools in this area, um, performed really well. What I did here, it's a little hard to look at this, but I, I went through and I broke down on both um, K through five, which is really our third, fourth and fifth um, grade. And then I also looked at six through twelve and I looked at the average ranking in each of those subject areas. How we compared from an achievement standpoint. Uh, looking at English, math, reading and science. Also, the average ACT and the percentage of students passing AP and then the graduation rates. And I put together that, what's that overall average? Um, when you look at all of those different factors combined. And overall, we're, we're doing exceedingly well. Those are comparable measures. Um, each and every one of them on those achievement levels you can look at compared to other schools. Any questions on this graph? So really, this is the order of, the average order of placement or finish in each of these categories. Okay, another one that I personally like because it uses the same metric. Again, the school report card doesn't, but the US News and World Report uses the exact same metric for each and every school. And they use your graduation rates, they use a college readiness score, they use your um, AP participation rates, they look at that. And um, they also, in order to qualify to be included in that report, they do a projected based off of your demographics, your students should be performing at at least this level. And if you're not, then you just don't get included in the overall score. They'll still give you, they, they won't include you in the rankings. They'll give you your school performance score, but they won't include you in that top. Um, so when we look at, this is out of the five hundred seventeen high schools in the state of Wisconsin. We're at sixty-one this year. Uh, we fluctuated between um, below thirties to about that sixty range. This includes private high schools, charter high schools. Um, so some of the, the top ones is like the magnet gifted and talented school in, in Milwaukee is up in that area. So, um, it puts us in the, um, we're in the top two thousand schools in the entire country out of twenty, I think just over twenty-six thousand. And again, that includes all private, public and special magnet schools as well. So we're doing quite well in that comparison there. And then I think, I tried to look for an updated report on this. I, I think one of the factors that, that you just have to measuring can't ignore is hey, this is, you know, out of the community's look at and, and value of the education that's being provided. This is related to area district en- enrollment. And especially since the housing market has been pretty flat, we haven't had a lot of startups. This isn't so much in this part of the state because someone came and put in a great big huge new subdivision. Uh, but again, Elkhorn, we're at five point five percent um, increase, which is a very large increase for a district our size. And uh, we're right behind Williams Bay who had eight point eight percent.
And this is enrollment actual numbers?
Yeah, this is head count. So it's not just resident students. It's overall head count. But this was last year because we're over thirty-five hundred students now. And they, they haven't updated this. Any questions on any of that before I shift to the redefining ready? Okay, and I do have hard copies of the redefining ready in the lobby that if, if you don't have a copy of that new report card. But again, the, the school district or the school board adopted the redefining ready standard several years ago and it's really been a, a great focus for us. We're looking at again, attendance, curriculum participation, uh, GPA, uh, taking AP courses, percentage passing the AP exam, dual credit college classes. I want to highlight that as we move further over and actually there's room in this format for us. We could go back even further, but just from um, the fifteen, sixteen school year to this year, where this past year we had um, eleven hundred and twenty-six. Percentage of students taking those, seventy-three percent. Students earning this year better. And then percentage of students composite ACT scores. And you'll have some fluctuation in that as different cohorts have, you know, different makeup. So we actually saw a little bit of a dip in our ACT scores last year in regards to the, the ranges. Um, the twenty-six plus, we saw fewer. The middle range stayed, the twenty-one to twenty-five stayed about the same um, with last year's uh, class. And then career-based experiences and industry-based certifications, that's something we're really excited about and proud of. Um, that's up to three hundred and nineteen as far as the, uh, oh, I'm sorry, that's industry-based certificates was three hundred and nineteen and we had a hundred and twenty-five career-based experiences. Um, so that's a lot of professional trade certificates that are students have been earning and it also brings in um, a lot of additional revenue to help support those programs as we received a thousand dollars per student. Uh, some students complete, we didn't get three hundred and nineteen thousand because they only award you um, a thousand dollars per student when they graduate. So one kid may have earned three certifications, so you get one thou- thousand dollars for them. And some of the kids who earned those certifications may have been juniors or sophomores last year. Um, I believe we've even had freshmen earn as well in certifications. Uh, but again, those are metrics that were established by AASA and that's the Association of American Superintendent's as well as the um, AASA, the, the curriculum association in the country based off of a lot of studies on that readiness. Any questions on the redefining ready report card?
On the percent passing AP test?
Yes.
It went down from fifty-eight to fifty-two? Is that because there's, there's more or?
Yeah, we've, I mean, if you look, it's slightly more, four hundred and sixty-two compared to four thirty-five the prior year, but when you look at we've more than doubled the AP exams from two years ago. And the percentage did dip a little bit from the sixteen, seventeen. About, you know, seven percent there, but we have a substantially larger group of students taking it. Yeah. And I know it's something that the high school staff, they're very much focusing on, you know, how to increase and improve that average. That is right around the national average. It's slightly above the national average on the passing rate. And each exam has a different passing rate. Um, some of them are more rigorous and, and have a smaller percentage of students that pass. But um, potentially, um, yeah, we're, we're above the national average on that and we have a lot more students taking the exams. Um, or taking the classes, which is a good thing. They're, they're challenging themselves on that, that rigor, which ultimately was the, the goal with that. Um, but it is, if you go back, oh, probably in twelve thirteen um, or eleven, twelve in that range, we received a recognition for having, I think, over seventy-five percent of our kids pass, pass the AP exam. But we only had twenty-eight kids taking the exam. So it's, you know, if you were to ask me what I, you know, it's not that we don't care that, you know, the numbers there, but it is above the national average. I know the teachers are working hard to, to boost that up. I will also point out, the um, US News and World Report only factors in AP, but that's not our only focus. You look at, um, you know, we had four hundred and sixty-two seats in AP courses, but we had eleven hundred and twenty-six um, in transcripted courses, project lead the way courses and AP combined. So we, we actually had more students, just about seven hundred, that were in non-AP courses um, last year that were in dual credit type courses. If that was factored into that US News and World Report, we'd be way up that scale. Did, did that answer the question, Adam?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I.
You're right, it did drop a little bit.
But I think a lot of the time, um, it's almost like educating them on how to take those types of tests is how we can get improvement. I mean, it's, it's the nature of the beast is, you know, understanding how to take a test.
My son, yeah. My son has yet to pass one and he keeps getting like a two point eight something, a two point eight. And he has yet to study like he needs to study for. I prefer to tell him, but yeah.
We are on camera.
She won't be watching.
Hey, that's pretty good for breaking your book for a couple of hours. Way to go, buddy. Just imagine if you put in a little bit more. But, but yeah, but I'm okay with that because it's still, it's that learning process. I would rather have him get a little more dialed in into what he needs to do before heading off.
I think at the AP meeting, Chris Trottier did a great job explaining to the parents that a two is proficient. You know, so, so as a parent, when you're spending the ninety-four dollars, it's like, oh my gosh, you're like dying for that three, right? But the fact that your kids are taking that regulars course and taking the test and maybe getting a two or, you know, like, I don't regret the fact that my son took two as a freshman, passed one and didn't pass the other, you know, like, who, you know, I mean, the fact is, is that he put himself out there. You know, so I think it's great. I mean, I sit at it and go, what would you learn from it? You know, would you do it again? Yep, you know, so it's just, I think the learning process and the fact that they're willing to expand themselves at that young age is great.
Percentage, yeah. No, but. Percentage wise, does Williams Bay have more AP classes than not all the others that we have where we, like, you said, we have eleven hundred. Some, uh, so do they have more AP?
We, we have a lot more.
A lot more opportunity here.
Opportunity.
Right, that's, that's what I was trying to say, that I think we, they don't have the variety that we have for whatever you want to go into.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I would say from a parent point of view that our students are very um, comparable, those that are excelling with the AP exams coming close to those like say from an Arrowhead school districts and others. We've added so many opportunities as well as across the board in so many areas, but AP, you know, being one um, that our students are entering with, you know, comparable credits as those kids coming from what you would consider those really high-powered school districts in the state. Um, I know my two were amazed at the opportunity. They learned, they had greater opportunities than their peers, they in the dorms and on their floors when they heard how many credits some kids came in with because they only had three or four classes to choose from versus our students who have multiple dual credit opportunities. And at that point, they realized they were very fortunate to, to have all of that laid out in front of them, so.
And, and really the, the focus with this redefining, right, the dual credit college classes, the AP, it's about creating um, multiple pathways for those students. So we know there's a lot of students that aren't going to go on to a four-year college, but again, over seven hundred of those are transcripted courses or project lead the way courses from that transfer directly into Gateway or other technical schools or into their apprenticeships. So there's a huge benefit with those as well and all project lead the way courses direct transfer over to Gateway as well.
And I think to that point, I mean, when my son interviewed for his work-study program, it has a lot of application and he had MSOE as a freshman, transcripted courses.
Right.
I mean, they were, as, as a group of engineers, they were like, what? What, you know, who has that opportunity right now? You know, to do that. So that's, um, yeah, definitely. Yeah. I don't think they really cared what he scored on an AP test.
Just being exposed to it.
Exactly. But I, I think the, the dual credit and the opportunity there is amazing.
Yeah, um, there, there really isn't, there really aren't other districts that are close to us on, on those metrics. I think something important to communicate though to people is um, when people think of college, they need to get away from just thinking of college as a four-year university. College is post-secondary education. And I've been racking my, my head over this. I know Paul and I had a, a conversation related to that and I've really been trying to think, well, what career out there doesn't require further education? Some college for further education. Now, if you go to the military, once you get done with boot camp, where do they send you? To school to get further training. There's, there's that, I, um, oh, I had that the other day and I forgot what it is now. But it's just about every career, um, is going to re- require college and additional training at some point. So, I mean, our message, you know, what I'd share with parents is that yeah, we want to make sure that each and every kid can be successful at that level. Um, and if they choose not to, that's fine, but uh, we want them to have the skills that they need to, that they choose them. Any other questions on this before I go to benchmarking quick? All right, if you ever have any questions, let me know. Um, I'm happy to sit down with anyone or any group and go through and break it down for them. So math testing, I, I know some of you get this question and um, you know, I get this as well. So math testing, I know some of you get this question, and, you know, I get this as well, and, and, well, why do we need to do this? Why do, and math testing's coming up for the kids. My third grader's, oh, we got math testing again, he wasn't upset, I think he actually likes to check in, see how his progress is and what he's doing. But math testing is the type test that we call a benchmarking test. It's not the only assessment we use, but it's one of those key integral benchmarking tests that we utilize. Now, what I shared up here with you is a report from NWA. This is actually Connie Evans' class last year. And most people, when they think of Connie teaches fifth grade, and so they think of a fifth-grade teacher, and they think, oh, well, yeah, it's a fifth-grade teacher, you've got fifth-grade curriculum, you teach fifth graders. Here's the challenge that we have by the time kids hit this age range. Fifth-grade level material, we know that kids learn best when they're taught within what's called their zone of proximal development. Or their readiness level is another way to think of it. So if we were to look at fifth grade and scroll down, okay, here's her fifth-grade curriculum, and highlight this area right here, those are the kids in her class who will get great growth if they're taught at the fifth-grade level. Roughly four out of an entire class. So what we know, and what's a challenge then, is, well, if I've got my fifth-grade curriculum here, what do these kids need? And just because I've worked with this a lot, what she's dealing with these kids over here within fifth grade, these kids are probably around the 10th-grade skill level, and they're in fifth grade. But if you just look at the national norm, they're, they're close to that 10th-grade skill level. These kids right here are probably sitting in that seventh, eighth-grade level range. These kids over here, probably fourth-grade level, we're looking at about third-grade level, and down in that second-grade level range. So in reality, she's dealing with kids from a second grade to about a 10th or 11th grade readiness level, within the same class. And the easiest approach is just, okay, here's our fifth-grade curriculum, I'm going to teach it to you, and we'll see great growth from those four kids. These kids may grow, if they're, to be frank, if they're going out on their own and they're reading additional materials or their families are doing things with them, they'll make that progress. These kids right here, it's going to be over the top of their head, they're not going to progress. And what happens as we go further down, this is how we end up with kids in sixth, seventh, eighth grade that are still lagging substantially behind where they're at. So the reason why we do the benchmarking, I wanted to dig into this just so that you can kind of see the background, is that these benchmarking tools give the teacher a wealth of knowledge that allows them to better guide their instruction to meet the zone of proximal development for that, that student. So, this is the dashboard of the report site, and there's a ton of information there. I don't want to show, I'm not going to show everything there, but I want to show you what they have access to, so you're familiar with it. And in a nutshell, though, that little elevator speech is, why do we do the math testing? So that the teachers know what the kids need. Without that, they're, they can get a ballpark idea, they can, you know, guesstimate what the kid's ready for, but they can't drill down and, and get exactly what they need. I like to use the metaphor of, it's like when you go to your doctor, if you go into your doctor, you know, what do they do right away? They check your blood pressure, they're checking, checking your temperature oftentimes. You tell them your symptoms that you have, they may run other tests. I wouldn't feel very comfortable if I just go into my doctor, he takes a look at me and says, ah, I think you need 100 milligrams of this, why don't you go and take that? Oh, great, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't, maybe it gets lucky, maybe it doesn't work, maybe it doesn't work. But there's reports that show how the entire class is, where they're at. This report, the teachers can look at every student, I don't know, come on. Every student within their class, these are not our actual students, these are sample kids, so. And they'll sort it by the lowest achievement level up to the highest achievement level. And that's why I say you can go and identify then on cross-referencing approximately where those, those grade-level ranges are. And so that report just kind of gives them a summary of where their kids are, but it also will tell them really quick which goal-strand area, we call these goal-strand areas are aligned to the Common Core standards. So in this case, there's literature, information text, and vocabulary acquisition and use. So they can tell really quick what are those areas of need, and then these areas link to specific standards that they can easily access. And so our teachers in each of the elementary schools and at the middle school, they actually look at this report, and they work with the students to set a classroom goal to focus in a certain area. And what we found, I went through last year, all the classes that did this, I think there were a total of 58, does that sound about right? 57 of the 58 saw that area of focus flipped from being the lower area to the higher. Just from setting a goal in that area and doing some specific skill work in that. Student profile report. Now, this is a very, I'm gonna, I'm going to show you this one, and then for the time's sake, I think we'll move on. But this will give you an idea for, I'll just pull up one of my kids, because I can give permission to look at that.
While Jason's pulling that up, what I like is we have that class goal setting, so they work together on those specific skills. Then many teachers take that one step deeper, and then they look at the individual profile of teaching sharing, and then they set individual goals with the students. And then that aligns with that Edge Annuity Compass Learning Program. So then students create those learning paths and continue down there. And oftentimes, teachers kind of are like, here's what you're working on, and then they may list one or two students that are strong in that area, so if they may have a question on that on their computer, they could go to that student. And they ensure that every child becomes an expert for another, as well as, you know, here are people you could reach out to. So just to increase that independence in learning and challenging them that way. So we look at both that classroom learning goal, as well as then individualizing it when they work on that Compass and Genenuity program.
Now, the teacher has access to all of these reports, they can share them with the parents if they want to as well and competency. We also, in the upper grade levels, we have language usage, we don't do the science exam, but we do those three exams. So it tells you really quick for the student what their national percentile rank is as compared to all their students in the country. And then it tells you their score and their different strengths, their different strands. Just because you have a student who may score very high in mathematics, doesn't mean that when you're working on numbers and operations, you should necessarily just group them with all the students that are high in mathematics. So when I look at JJ's, he's, his low area is numbers and operations. So when the teacher goes to instruct in that area, they can click on that, and he'll give them a list of what the student is ready to learn within those subject areas. So it can be a little overwhelming if you try looking at it all at once. But what they're taught to do is, when you're going, as you're going through your curriculum, and you get to, okay, this is the concept we're working on, now I can click on it. And really, within three differentiations, you can capture just about everyone in the class. And that lesson, or that mini lesson for the kids, can be more targeted and focused for what they're ready to learn. This chart over here will also, I'll go back to the homepage. It works the same for reading, and it'll give that breakdown, but what I wanted to show you is, where did my graph go? Oh, you helped me out here, I'm missing, where did my growth chart go?
The group one?
The individual.
Click there, let's see. You talking of the one with the graph that's all the, that in a different report?
No, it's here.
The class graph?
No, the individual structure.
Oh, I think, yeah, I know what you mean.
That's all right, I'll pass. It also shows, right here, you can see there's a graph that'll show the student's progress on that home splash screen.
I think you have to back out of the report to get to that initial stage. Now, what are their areas?
Okay, and this will show the graph and share where they're at and what those growth rates are for the student. So those are a couple pieces, I just wanted you to have the key concept, and I'm happy to spend more time and sit down and go through all those other reports in depth if you want. But it really is to be a tool to help our teachers drill down on exactly what those kids need so that they can be more, you know, effective with those students. And what we try to focus on with the teachers is the variable that we have the ability to control is the growth of the students. We can't control what achievement level they come into our class with, we can't control all the things that are going on at home, but we can control what we do with the students in the class. We want to support the teachers so they can maximize the growth for the students. We've talked about, we've had people ask, well, should we take away the winter testing and just do two tests? The challenge then is, then you don't have an opportunity in the middle of the year to pivot and see how you're doing. If you don't do the testing at the beginning of the year, then you don't know where the kids are starting. You'll be surprised at what jumps and either gains or regressions kids will have over, over summer break in that timeframe. And then at the end of the year, it gives us that final check-in with how we do by the end, you know, at the end of the year. It's not a high-stakes test, it doesn't get used for, you know, their evaluation, it doesn't get used for their pay scale. Some districts have done that, it doesn't get used for our overall school scoring. It's just a tool that's there for, to help us better inform our instruction.
I think that's the emphasis you have to have with the community when they talk about the excessive map testing and things. It's not about each individual student per se, it's about the environment which we are taking care of individual students. Now, because you do hear a lot of complaint about another map, another map, but I think when they see the big picture of what it is opposed to just my child, just my child, just my child, it makes sense.
And it comes down to roughly, if your kids in third through eighth grade, roughly nine hours of testing a year to help inform, how many hours of instruction are the thousands, you know, of hours of instruction, well over 1,000 hours of instruction. So it's, when you look at it from a percentage basis, would you like to spend about 2% of your time to inform 98% of your work? It's not a lot of time spent on diagnostic testing. When I go to the mechanic, I hope they're spending quite a bit of time running diagnostics and tests before they start training the engineer. Okay, that's all I had on that side, I know it took quite a bit of time, but I wanted you to have a good understanding of it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I too say it's a really long-winded, but I'm just as long-winded, so.
I hear more than anything, well, we didn't used to do all this, but I was talking about differentiation in one classroom to someone. He's looking at me like, really?
Yeah.
Really? He doesn't have kids, and he has no idea what goes on in the classroom, so.
I think it's great, and my kids hate it, so I understand it. I mean, they asked me today, can you get me out of it? Nope. You know, I mean, no, no kid wants to feel pressured, but having a kid with an IEP, like being able to get something three times a year versus one IEP needing a year, like, that was amazing. I mean, you can do that at private school, I loved it when we came here.
My, my wife's a teacher in Genoa City, but she also runs a targeted program, and she's working with a student with special needs that has an IEP, and she did a reading intervention with them. And they tested just from the fall to the winter, and that student, when you're behind on your skill level, you do have a great potential to grow really rapidly as you get older, if the instruction's done at your level and the right way. He grew 33 points in half the year, and he was ecstatic. I mean, what that does for someone's confidence and ability to believe, I can't read, I'm never going to get this, but then to be able to see that verified and validated, it has a huge impact.
I was going to say, assessments such as this, I was a young teacher at the time, believe it or not, and they came to me and said, this is what your children will be doing, and I really balked it, and I thought, this is like, really not okay. Do they have the attention span? I was teaching second grade at the time, and I kind of pushed back with my CNI director and said, you know, I don't know about this, and this is... And the minute we got in and I saw how the students responded, and the data and the information I got, changed what I was able to do as a classroom teacher. I went from being a person that said, over my dead body, are we testing all of these children like this three times a year? To, I can't wait to get that information, I can't wait for it to inform my instruction. You know, teachers, it was very subjective, yes, you know, right or wrong answer on a test, but a lot of other assessments are very subjective in the classroom. And to know how my second graders were doing at a national level, and as Jason said, knowing if I'm closing the gap, because if a child just continues to grow at that level and they are below grade level, they're never getting to grade level. We have to get that moving and closing the gap. So it's given a sense of accountability for a parent to say, I, as a parent, I have the right for my child, whether they're high average or low, to grow one year's growth at minimum, and hopefully more if they're a little bit lower and just need that extra time and attention. It gives teachers some accountability because they know, you know what, we do need to cover this because we are going to assess kids, and then I know what didn't stick, and I go back to the drawing board. It's very valuable information, and, you know, but you're right, Paul, we have to make sure parents and families understand that. Kids will come home and grumble, you know, it's a long time to sit there. If you want some good entertainment, watching those kindergartners come on board with this assessment right away is often fun. And if anyone wants to volunteer, that's probably where we need to do the most, is we get them on-boarded. But in the end, it's worth it, and we continue to communicate that with the teachers too. And how the teachers approach it drives how those kids approach it, and hopefully, parents continue to back this as we really do use that information.
Another tidbit, NWA is a not-for-profit, they were created by teachers, for teachers, because they were tired of standardized assessments. And so technically, the map test is not a standardized assessment because they do align and identify standards, but a standardized assessment will be like, if you're in third grade, here's the third-grade standards, and that's what you take. Doesn't matter if you're in an eighth-grade level, every question you see will be in that third-grade level range. The map test will start at your grade-level norm, but then adjust to where you're at. So every kid gets a different exam based on where they're at. So it's called a dynamic assessment, so it's not a standardized assessment. Not that parents or families are really, I understand that, but I want you to be able to speak to it, and I'm happy to always talk to people above.
My daughter was talking to me just a couple weeks ago, and she said, do they have tests that adjust like that? And I go, yeah, I know all about them. And we had a good discussion, I don't know, she picked up an article somewhere and was reading it, so.
Yeah, yeah, called an adaptive tester, right? All right, that's all I had on that. WASB resolutions, the upcoming convention is on its way, and here is a list of the resolutions. Did you select a delegate already?
No.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
But I think we talked about it in the earlier-
Last year, last year, I didn't go, I was, but it depends on the timing, which time I have. Because it's not always really productive time, it depends on what else is out there. Because you're in a room with, I'm not sure how many there are, 300 people or- Because you're in a room with, I'm not sure how many there are, 300 people or however many, you know, could be about 300 probably. And sometimes they really, in that large of a group, sometimes they go off on, away from the actual topic that they start with.
Are you going this year?
Yeah, I'm going to school board. I mean, school board convention, so.
Are you going to go to the morning, or?
Am I going to what?
To the morning.
If you want to go.
No, I didn't know that.
Don't worry.
I've never felt passionate enough about to get up and speak.
Right.
Except when they talked about seatbelts on the school buses, that really got heated. And I was ready to just say, "Stop, we're not going anywhere." It was one of those discussions, so, but I did it. But if you have, you know, if you have a comment, there's actually one or two a year that I thought are reasonable this year. And basically, what these are is where they spend probably more their...
Where they lobby.
Their lobbying.
Where they lobby the legislature.
Legislature, right. And some of these have come back year after year after year.
So, interesting, now I see a resolution related to school report cards.
I know, yes.
Because we are the county seat, and we, that means any student who goes to the coin, regardless of where they were originally from. Like, could be Lake Laneroom Head, this happened to us, the student goes to jail, they get released from jail, the student never re-enrolls. And Lake Laneroom Head, guess where they're a dropout from? Elkhorn. That impacts school report cards artificially. So the fact that we have the highest school report card this year in the area, and we have students on a yearly basis who disappear, who were never our students, but, you know, we may have provided some services at the jail, I think that's pretty phenomenal. But it happens more often than not. It's kind of bizarre how that's set up. Yeah, it's one of the benefits of being a county seat.
And the mental health categorical aid that has come up before, and that is a very heated argument, I'd say, on both sides. But that has been some really good discussion. So it's kind of nice sometimes to hear what the other districts are saying and think about it. The whole Native American mascots is, it's interesting to listen to the discussions. I'm glad we have the Elk.
Me, too.
It just makes you appreciate how it can be a very emotional issue for some of the people that live in that district.
Both sides.
Right, that's what I'm saying. The people, we've always had this way, but they, you know, they have a love for that community. And the other side is, we need to look at where we are in the world now, and so it was interesting conversations.
I worked in Burlington High School for over a decade, and demons still gets attention.
Senator Nassau's aide brought that up, that religious conservative groups don't want to send their kids to a school that's named the demons or the devils, the blue devils. Ironically, Duke is an ecclesiastical school near the blue devils. Was a blue devil a good creature? I don't know. But, yeah, they, likewise, that was his point that he brought up, which I really didn't get the point. Because he was saying, "Don't get rid of the Native American ones. We'll get rid of the devils." But I think his point was, there's other things that are controversial that people don't bring up. And if there's a certain number of people, because I think the proponents of getting rid of the Native American mascots will argue that, "Well, how many people does it take to be offended to get rid of a mascot? If two or three people are feeling repressed from that, should you run that mascot?" And then his counterpoint was, "Well, how many faith-based conservatives need to be offended before you get rid of the demons mascot or the devils mascot?"
And I keep going back to the Marquette Golden Eagles. I don't remember what they were before, but they changed their mascot. And people were so passionate about it, but they changed it, and you look at it so many years ago, I even forgot what it was, you know? But it was, it really made headline, national headline news because of it, but I don't know. I don't know if there's a right way or a wrong way, but.
I agree with you. I'm glad we're there.
Yes. And meal shaming is another thing that keeps coming up probably in the news reports. I'm glad we have a much better way of handling it.
So if you have any other thought or input, let Bart know on that, and if you want to hear the delegate meetings, like, I've always heard that they're fascinating.
There's some really good discussions, and then some that really get long-winded, and that's where you start talking to the people next to you. You can find out where they're from, and, yeah.
So we have a number of first readings and some proposals to delete the use of the facility center. We have an update on there that is more in line with our procedure, which is just that we need people to check in. And then we also talked about that would like to extend the usage of the facility center, which there's plenty of space during the community hours to incorporate the businesses located within the Elkhorn Area School District. And, you know, invite them to allow their employees to come in at that, basically like that resident type rate. We were approached by, I think, the county, John?
This was started, yeah, meeting with the county and asking, they were interested in our classes, and then they started talking about the fitness center. And there are employees who are employed, obviously, by them, but don't live in the district. And so after that meeting, it's like, it made sense to go, "Well, why wouldn't we do that for all the businesses in our district? Extend the membership rate. If you work at a business in the district, but you're not living in the district, yeah, there's a rate for you and a membership for you."
And any questions on that for first reading? Any thoughts, or, I mean, I think it's something the policy committee felt made sense. And it's a way to get back to, you know, businesses contribute to the local tax levy and help as well. And I think getting the exposure to those families is nothing but positive. The class size, we put in a proposal to delete this. The reality, this is a minimum class size number, which was put in to, you know, prior to us having such a wide variety of offerings that we have at the high school level. In order to create those opportunities for kids, we do have sections that will run less than 15. And we haven't been eliminating those classes when they're less than 15, unless they're really small, like six or five, or it's just not feasible to run it because they're so small. But with the alternative open enrollment and the state-level options program where kids can take two classes from any institution, it also doesn't make a lot of fiscal sense if you eliminate a section and then need to turn around and pay $1,000 plus per pupil for them to take the course from another school. So it gives us that flexibility by eliminating or deleting that policy. Would like to ask to delete that. I don't know why that one accidentally got copied over there. I apologize. This is just updating this to bring it in line with the co-curricular handbook, changing it from extracurricular to co-curricular activities. Also speaking to, WIA has some new guidelines in boilerplate language about, you know, behavior of the event. So it helps clarify that, yes, we can remove you if your behavior's not good. And then talking about the incorporating our nondiscrimination language, which has been boilerplate for several years now. This hasn't been updated since '99. Any questions on this policy? And then we're recommending to delete this, as this, these concepts are all covered in the new co-curricular policy. The eligibility was incorporated into that, so it's not really relevant now. And the policy pursuant to fundraising activities, if I'm going too fast, anyone can speak up. But we want to just change it to fundraising activities instead of just student, or it could be a number, you know, different organizations that may not be a specific student group. Maker Faire's not really a student club or organization, but it's something that they do and operate to benefit the kids, for example. And I believe that was really the only update to that. We had a lot of discussion on the policy, but everything still fits and is relevant other than just that minor language change. Student attendance. Just complying with legal, each month we get updates from WASB. This is again, making sure that we're in line with new case law and recommendations from WASB in regards to what should be in our policies. And this has been the practice anyway, is that we, the school attendance officers that are designated, as I designated the principals, they'll have, at the high school and the middle school, at the size of the schools, they actually have administrative assistant that's in charge of, you know, culling that data. But when they have questions, it's the principal who ultimately determines whether it's excused or unexcused based on our definitions there. We expanded, you know, what those definitions are as far as excused absences. So religious instruction or observing a religious holiday, suspension, pending expulsion, which has been statute for years anyway. It's been excused from regular school attendance, participating in program or curriculum modifications, has been quarantined to the student's home, or has an emergency that requires a student to be absent because of familiar responsibilities or other reasons determined by the school attendance officer. Then it is reflective of, again, current state law in regards to residency and additional residency. And then, as it's related to the handbook, there's a section in the handbook that's related to the live screening and protocol. And the procedures for the live screening have been updated, but a portion of those procedures is included, has been included in the handbook in the past. And so that would need board approval to update that. And prior, the language said, "Live screenings will perform as needed and with parent guardian permission." And now reads, "Individuals may be screened for headlights if they are displaying signs or symptoms per request by the school staff." I think a big change in this is related to FERPA, is they used to go and screen an entire class. You can no longer do that. You have to maintain the privacy of the individual students. So if a teacher feels that a student is symptomatic, they can request for that student to be screened. We also felt, just like a student, if you have a student who's vomiting in your classroom and, you know, there's a procedure, yeah, you're sick, you need to go home. Not that, I know the CDC doesn't view license in that same manner, but we also feel that, you know, if a kid's symptomatic, then we need to be able to check the kid and not allow parents to be involved with that. So we wanted to be able to update that to reflect that. Any questions related to that? Policy committee's been busy. Personnel? Okay, we have, I would encourage you in the board notes, if you haven't had a chance to read Debbie Bartholomew's, I'll try not to get emotional. I've had a chance over the past seven years to really get to know Debbie. She's a fighter. She fought cancer. She jokingly says that she's, it's true, she's one of the few, well, I'll tell this story later. Have a very unique cancer that's typically in a place, and it was in a rain instead of that place, and she has a funny joke about it. She survived it.
She's fun. I can see why the kids absolutely love her.
She's great for the kids. She was married to one of the Air Force aces and Top Gun pilot, or not Air Force, Navy aces that the movie Top Gun was based on, Maverick. So her husband got in trouble quite a bit for doing the local flights. But, so, yeah, interesting character. She's just wonderful with the kids, helped build that program, and has been at the alternative high school for 30 years.
She's still involved with the, at all, like with the reading program and getting the kids to Chicago.
She still does that, but I don't know what her plan is.
Yeah, I know, because that has been really unique for those kids. Some of those kids have never been, you know, take a train, and then to go to Chicago, I mean, some of them, this is really, and then to be backstage at a play on top of it all. It's quite an opportunity.
So I want to thank her for her years of service and commitment to the school district. She'll be 70 years young this year when she returns. So then we have Audrey Green, and who's been serving as a custodian at Jackson. We want to thank Audrey for her service. And then we have the recommendation to appoint Todd Galani as the head football coach. He'd be replacing Tom Lee for the 2020-2021 school year. Questions? Questions on any of those?
Motion to approve.
So what?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So a motion seconded to approve the personal recommendation sheet for January 13th, 2020, as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? School gifts?
Okay, we have a number of school gifts today. First, we have Kevin Monte has donated $1,000 to Tibbetts Elementary School to be used out of the discretion of administration. Lynn Jekka has donated $1,000 to Tibbetts Elementary School to be used out of the discretion of administration. Thielin Toll Construction has donated $500 to Tibbetts Music Department, $500 to the Art Department, and $500 to use out of the discretion of administration. The Blue Roadhouse has donated $100 to Tibbetts Elementary from the proceeds of their meat raffles to be used out of the discretion of administration. And Supporting Our School Inc. has donated a PE scooter to the middle school valued at $2,100. And then Jordan Reynolds has donated a microwave to the high school valued at $80.
Can I ask what a PE scooter is?
Please do. That's on everything.
You can ask. It must be, I believe it's an adaptive physical education device. Or is this for a set of scooters? Because they use these little scooters that they sit on to play different games?
Yeah, but it says "A" scooter for $2,100.
That's what I'm thinking.
I was like, yeah.
For someone in a wheelchair or something, maybe?
I was picturing the teachers.
It's got chrome wheels on it. Booming radio system.
A little smaller than a Sigway.
I think, I think that it's actually, because I know the PE department and their request and what they identified for the equipment, I think it's a typo I probably should have caught, and I believe it's a set of scooters for the class. So like 40 or 50.
Oh, okay.
Play the, they're different, like they'll do little broom ball games on the scooters and stuff. Because I know they were looking at that, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, I remember using those.
Yeah, it's really low to the ground, yeah. They can only touch their fingers and roll.
It didn't take much for a kid.
Other questions?
That's almost $6,000.
Yeah.
Promotion to approve our generous gifts.
So much.
A second? All second? So a motion seconded to accept the generous gifts of Kevin Monte, Lynn Jekka, Thielin Toll Construction, The Blue Roadhouse, Supporting Our School Inc., and Jordan Reynolds, as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Give it then.
Who seconded that one? I'm sorry. If you look at your board notes, there's a couple of hyperlinks in there. One is for the board convention coming up next week. Scott McCloud, I've seen him several times and he's, he's very good, I believe he's the keynote. It's, they always do a wonderful job with convention there. If you do have the ability to get up there, I'd strongly encourage you to. I believe CJ Schmidt also sent an invite for lunch in one of the days. I can forward that to you if you're going to be out there and let us know. Yeah. It's, the way they do it is kind of nice because it's just over one of the smoke houses and you just go and it's kind of buffet style, so it doesn't take a lot of time. All right? And, sorry, the second one was, oh, we were kind of featured in the associate, the superintendent's Associate AESA magazine, if you didn't have a chance to look at that article, that was on our post-secondary readiness program. There's just a paragraph speaking to us, but two Wisconsin schools were featured in that from the director of the school superintendent's association, Dan Thomas. So I included that. That's all I have.
I'm just having to, just wanted to point out for the record that I missed the December meeting because I was down in Texas for my granddaughter's funeral. But I just, I wanted to state for the record that on the, the four different 2020 referendum discussion questions, I'm in totally favor of all four of those. So just wanted to make that part of the record.
Thank you. We do have a closed session this evening. Looking for a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'm moving to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985 14C to evaluate the job performance of the district administrator. The school board will not reconvene in a concession.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So I'm moving to second it to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985 1C. To evaluate the job of the performance of the district administrator, the school board will not reconvene in a closing call vote, please.
Uh, Mr. Maxell?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Dinger-Gottschalk, anything else you need to put on? Ms. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayhart?
Motion carried.